And call the meeting to order. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this is the city council meeting that we'll have right before our budget committee. If the clerk would call roll, please.
Counselor Bowlin.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
And it looks like Counselor Reese Camp and Grizzle and Scott are absent.
Correct. Consent calendar, following items are considered routine and be acted by one motion. The agenda, Lebanon City Council agenda for today or for May 14th, 2014.
Move to approve.
Move for approval.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Those opposed? The agenda's passed, consent calendar. Regular session, we have the budget committee appointment, Dr. Adam Kirkpatrick. And we have the, do we have the application? Does Dean? I don't have that in front of me.
Oh, he's doing it.
What's that? Okay. Okay, very good. And I'd like to recommend that Dr. Adam Kirkpatrick is on the budget committee. I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll move so.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Adam Kirkpatrick to the budget committee for a three-year term. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, welcome. Thank you for your willingness to help out, appreciate it. Okay, with that, we're going to adjourn the city council meeting. And I'll call the budget committee meeting of 2014 for fiscal year 15 to order. Roll call, Sarah Bishop. Switch o' change o'. Here.
Committee Member Patrick.
Here.
Committee Member Ashton.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Committee Member Olver.
Here.
Counselor Bowlin.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Jeffries.
Committee Member Jeffries.
Just got a promotion there, Carrie.
I wasn't listening that first part.
Is that a motion?
So it looks like Counselor Reese Camp, Counselor Scott, Counselor Grizzle, Committee Member Garner, and Committee Member Justin are acting.
Correct. Okay, let's move forward. We need to elect a budget committee chair for this fiscal year 15. Do I have any nominations?
I move we appoint Floyd Fisher.
Can I second that motion?
It's been moved and seconded to appoint Floyd Fisher, Counselor Fisher, as the budget chair for this year. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Besides Floyd? The motion passes. Welcome.
Well, okay, meeting adjourned. Yeah.
First, approve the budget then adjourn.
Oh, okay.
Oh, and then, oh, that's your job.
Yes. Do we elect a secretary?
Yeah.
Where's the agenda here?
You've got a page for the agenda.
Yeah, I'm looking the wrong place here. Yes.
There you go.
Got the right one. It's time to elect a secretary. Open for nominations.
I would nominate Adam Kirkpatrick to be secretary.
I would second that.
Boo.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Can somebody let me know what exactly you're looking for?
You don't do anything.
Oh, am I in charge of big minutes? Oh, it's, it's, okay, all right, sure.
Yeah, you can relax.
You just get to put it on, you get to put it on your resume.
It's something that has to be.
Wanted to let you sweat for just a minute.
Thanks.
Let's see. Um, let's see, you have before you the budget minutes from last year. Entertaining motion for approval or?
I'm going to approve the budget committee meeting minutes for 2013, 2014.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passed. Um, let's see, now it's time for City Manager Gary Marks to make a presentation of the fiscal year 15 budget.
Okay, I'm gonna go over there and do that. Are you hearing me?
Yep.
Well, I've been on board for about seven weeks now and been trying to get up to speed on the city's finances for that entire time. However, last couple of weeks has reminded me of my old college days and cramming for finals, trying to take in as much information as possible to help everyone understand our budget and perhaps some of the trends that we've been seeing. So, um, so tonight, what we're asking for is for two budgets that need to be reviewed and approved by the budget committee. And whether we do that tonight or in a subsequent night will depend on our proceedings. But the first one, of course, will be the fiscal 14, 15, City of Lebanon budget. And in my presentation to you, I'll be providing you with an overview of that budget and a more in-depth general fund analysis. There has been a lot of events occur over this past fiscal year. And before we go forward, I wanted to give some time to that and hopefully increase the understanding of some of the issues involved. And besides that, we also have the fiscal 14, 15, Urban Renewal Agency budget. So when we get to the end of this process, you'll be asked to approve two different budgets, although they are housed within one document. So, just the general overview of the city budget. It does cover the fiscal year that begins on July 1 of this year, runs for 12 months and ends June 30 of 2015. It provides the budget authority for the services and projects that the city anticipates providing during the fiscal year. Without this document, the city really can't do much of anything. So this is kind of the central annual document that determines in a large extent what the policies and the services of the city and what those will be. The budget contains nine broad funds with 67 segregated self-balancing divisions or departments. I'll ask you to think back on the budget presentation that we had last week for those of you who were able to be there, put on by the League of Oregon Cities. And at that session, we were told that a fund was recognized by the fact that it was a set of self-balancing accounts. So I will tell you, in my definition, in my 23 years of managing cities, we actually functionally have 67 funds. And those nine funds that I talked about initially there, those are kind of umbrellas that group these funds together. 67, I'll tell you from my experience, is a lot of funds. And Dean and I have been talking a lot about budget the last seven weeks. And I think we're on the same page that going forward, we're gonna see if we can't consolidate some of those. There's a point where you get so many funds that you can no longer see the forest for the trees. And you divide things up in such small pieces that it's hard to see what the effort is into any particular service that we provide. So going forward, we'll be doing some of that. And I'll say to Dean's credit that since he's been on board the last several years, he has actually reduced that figure. You see there 67, I don't know, before it was closer to 100?
105.
Yeah. So this is an ongoing process to try to simplify the budget. And there'll be some other things that we do to simplify the budget going forward and try to increase the ability for you and also for the public to understand the city's finances. So the budget totals a little over $41 million in appropriation spending authority. And I want to talk about what that means. Appropriation authority is not really dollars, it's authority to spend dollars. So you can have all the appropriation authority in the world, and if you don't have the dollars to match it, then you can't spend them. But the other side of that is, you can have far more dollars than you have appropriations. And what that means is you only have the authority to spend up to your appropriation level. I want to make sure we understand what appropriation is. Anyway, that reflects a decrease of $13.2 million as compared to the current adopted and revised budget. Now, that seems like a pretty dramatic reduction. And I'll tell you, and I'll explain it more as we go forward, the real story isn't that dramatic. And so hold on and we'll get to that. So graphically, if we looked at this, because I recognize that people are more visual than they are maybe informational, so I'm trying to, I try to infuse a lot of visuals here so that we can all understand what we're talking about. But last year's adopted and revised budget again is that 54.3 million dollar budget. And then what we're proposing this year is just a little over 41. So I talked about those six funds that were really umbrellas of many other smaller accounting units. And those six funds at least, I debated if I should show you 67, but I think you would get, you know, worn out quick on that. So just for generalized purposes here, wanted to show you what each of those are and how much of the appropriation authority is being recommended for each. And we'll delve in a little bit deeper as we go on with some of these numbers. Anyway, the general funds at 9.3 million, debt service at almost 3, enterprise funds, which are those set of funds that provide authority for our water, sewer, and stormwater, amount to north of 19 million. Special revenue fund, 4.2, capital projects, 4.8. And then a very small fund, it's too bad it earns its role in the top six, but it's really accounting for bail payments that people make through the court system. So that gets us all to that $41 million figure I spoke of. So just to give you a sense graphically what that looks like, almost half of what the city does financially is involved with the enterprise funds. And in fact, if you consider some of the debt, part of that debt service fund or for debts that accrue to the enterprise funds, probably about half of everything we do has to do with those enterprise funds. We look at the special revenue fund, the most significant player there is the street fund. Yet it accounts close to half of that 10% share you see there. And then interestingly, we're gonna spend a lot more time on the general fund than anyplace else tonight, and it doesn't really even make up more than a quarter. But it's an important fund, and we'll see a lot of the city's services are provided for through that fund. So we come back to the chart I just showed you, and I'll need to introduce this idea which some of you are familiar with, and it's the internal transfers. And I'm gonna spend some time making sure as much as possible we all understand what internal transfers are. But basically, it's money that gets counted twice, and I'll explain that here in a moment. So if you want to know what the external budget or the external spend, the external spending authority for our budget is, you need to remove those internal transfers. So effectively, what we have to spend to the outside world is 31.3. And the 9.8 there you see that's subtracted out, that's money that we're moving back and forth within the city itself. So let's talk about these internal transfers and the double accounting of money. I'm gonna choose an example that's not really related to the city at all, but let's just say you have an individual who has an income of $40,000. And so they decide, I'm gonna take my $40,000, I'm gonna put it in a bank account. Well, so this same individual, for whatever reason, decides, you know, I wanna set up another bank account, maybe it's a savings account, I'm gonna put $10,000 into that account. Now, under Oregon budget law, to move that money around, you have to have authority for $50,000, for the $40,000 that you have in bank account number one, and for the $10,000 you have in bank account number two. It doesn't mean you have $50,000. It means that you move some money around. So if you wanted to know how much money you still have to spend in the outside world, the bank account one, you would have to lower that balance, and between the two is what you have, 40,000. No surprise, pretty simple math. But I just wanted to make sure we all understand, we talk about transfers and why we're subtracting them out, that's why we do that. But Oregon budget law requires us to appropriate our transfers. So, I wanted to show you a comparison. I told you before that that figure, 54 last year compared to 41 this year, looked like a pretty dramatic reduction. Well, actually, if you take out the internal transfers, 22 million last year and almost 10 million from what we're proposing this year, the effective budget really isn't that much different. It is down about 3%. And graphically, that's what that looks like. A lot of that 3% is the activity that we've seen develop over the past year related to the general fund, and we'll get into that in a little more detail here in a moment. In fact, we're gonna get into that right now. The city general fund contains 13 active departments or divisions, and those are the ones you see up here on the screen, administration, human resources, legislative, legal, community development, engineering parks, finance, library, the courts, police, senior services, and non-departmental. And that non-departmental part, what, you know, the major players in there are building maintenance for city facilities, utilities for those buildings, and then the general fund's contingency. So let's talk about the general fund. The external appropriation authority for the general fund is 8.88 million. It provides the budget authority for those 13 divisions that we just looked at. It also funds about 11 fewer FTEs this year as compared to last year. And to give you a sense of the magnitude of that, last year there was about 101 FTE. After this reduction, we're at, just around, hovering right around 90. So about a 10 or 11% reduction in the number of employees because of the reductions we saw in the middle of the year. So, and also, the general fund provides financial support for the information services fund, the Peres Bond Fund, equipment acquisition and replacement, and custodial and building maintenance. And those were addressed in form of budget transfers in the aggregate of just over a half a million dollars. So, wanted to show you some of the trends going on with general fund resources. And you see that there's a reduction, in fact, let me grab my pointer, just a minute. The difference between that and what we're estimating for where we're gonna settle out this year, about 400,000 and some change. That reduction really has more to do with transfers. We're transferring in fewer dollars from the other funds in the city, and some of that has to do with the fact that we've, we have reduced the number of employees in the fund. And so, some of those employees are distributed to various funds throughout the city's complex of funds. Money is transferred into the general fund and they're paid out of the general fund. So really, the main reason that you see this, the revenue going down for the coming year has more to do with transfers in rather than our external funding sources. So just to give you an idea of the relative size of the different funding categories for the general fund, you can see that 41% is related to taxes that we collect and 21% to franchise fees. For those of you at the session last week, what we learned there was that in Oregon, the property tax and franchise fees are especially susceptible to economic ups and downs. So you can see right away that we have kind of a volatile setup here for how we fund our general fund, and these can vary significantly depending on what the economy is doing. So, and on that note, I'm gonna talk about what happened this past year and why it was kind of difficult to kind of get a handle on it. I think, as you know, as I just showed you, that our fiscal year runs from July to June. Well, there's 60 days after the fiscal year's over where we're still, we're on this modified accrual basis, which means that there are some of the revenues and some of the expenditures that occur in that 60 days after the fiscal year closes that actually get credited back to the prior year. And so how that relates to property tax payments is, we don't actually start getting property tax money in for the current fiscal year until September. And as you can see, those first couple of months really are not real significant. So it's really hard to tell, if you're trying to gauge, you know, where's my, where's my revenue going? And again, this is a 41% source of all of our revenue. It's really tough in that first two months to gauge where you're going. And besides, as Dean's informing, most of the money coming in here is money that's dribbling in from the last assessment. So even that's not a real good gauge for what we could expect going in the next year. So if we look at last year's budget, what was approved by, or recommended by the budget committee and approved by the council, there is a 5 or 6% increase anticipated in the property tax. So if I were Dean, what I'd be doing is I'd be watching, especially in November, you know, are my revenues gonna trend in compared to the prior years, the most recent prior years? If most of my money's coming in in November, am I trending the right way? Well, what we saw in November this year is, yeah, we trended up 20, 21% compared to the immediate prior year, and that year was fairly similar to the year before. So if I'm the finance director of the City of Lebanon, I'm looking at this and I'm going, okay, I need to be up 6% on the year, and my big payment, hey, I'm up 20%. I'm looking all right, I'm feeling okay about that. And so then the real thing that's gonna determine what's gonna happen is gonna be in December where there's some, you know, it's your second biggest month historically, but there's gonna be some more come in and it's gonna tell you a lot. Well, the prior year, we saw quite a bit of money come in, and you know, if it came in like that, you'd be, you'd be doing pretty good because you were up 20% here. Well, we got a little bit of a shock. The money came in in December, and it was only about $15,000, and that's this bar you can't see. Well, we went from up about 20% to down 3%, and you need to be up 6% for the year. And you see what's left here. By the time we're right here, you've collected 85% of everything. So at this point, going into January, that's when the panic starts to set in, and you're like, wow, jeez, got fooled on that. So I think that's when, pretty much when Dean started sounding the alarms, because that's when really the information became known that the property tax was not performing up 6%, that in fact, it was down a little bit. And we didn't have a whole lot, we only had 15% of the revenue to collect for the balance of the year. So let's look at the expenditure side. We're down by about $580,000 compared to the prior year. A lot of that does have to do with the fact that we've reduced our spending in real terms. And in the spirit of showing you the relative size of the different divisions in the general fund, we see about half goes to the police. It's an expensive but very important vital service that we provide to our citizens. And the remaining 51% is what's divided to all the other services. But I just wanted to give you a sense of what that looks like. And then there's another way to look at your spending, and that's by fund categories. Personnel services, 71%. So most of what we do in the general fund is pay people to provide services. And the rest are materials and services is the next largest, just almost, almost does not, registers a zero in the capital outline, there's a little bit there, less than 1%. Transfers to other funds, debt service, and then our ending balance. And we're, we're gonna look at this balance issue here a little more here in just a moment. So as far as personal services go, which we saw was that 71% share, it's actually down, the difference between 7 million and the 6.6 you see here, it's down about 67%. So it makes sense that they had to make reductions in the general fund. Most of it was gonna have to come out of, out of our personnel, and indeed it did. So I look at that and feel like, you know, we probably got the balance kind of right there. If it makes up 71% of the fund and 67% of the cut went there, then that's probably in line. So then we look at materials and services, it's down about 33,000. Our capital outline, like I said, is not a whole lot, 10,000 bucks, not a whole lot of movement there, but then again, there wasn't a whole lot to cut. These, I don't know how consequential they are to the whole discussion, but since I showed you the other categories, I thought I'd show you these. Again, we're, transfers to other funds, some of that has to do with the reductions we've done in the budget. And then the more important chart that I wanted to show you is this one. We spent some time last week with the fellows who are here from the League of Cities, talking about our fund balance and, you know, how your revenues and expenditures affect that. And if we look at these bar charts, green being our revenue and blue being the expenditures, it appears to only be very small amounts that were out of whack here, but here's the numbers, the value of each of these. And so for the last three years, we have been spending a little bit more than we've been bringing in. But if you keep that trend up long enough, it starts to add up to real money. In fact, if you total those three numbers, it comes into just about $665,000. So for what we're proposing this year, it is in balance as required. And we're gonna discuss this a little bit more in just a moment. But first, I want to talk about general fund balances. I want everyone to understand there's no legal requirements or universally accepted standards. The general fund balance is used primarily, A, to provide cash during months without significant income. And if you recall that chart I showed you with November being so high, after that, we've gotta have enough cash to float for pretty much the rest of the year. So we've gotta make sure that we've built our budget right, so we have that money there to go month to month until we get paid a year later. And then B, to provide a safety net against unexpected revenue declines. And, you know, as we've saw last week, our two biggest revenue sources, franchise fees and property tax, are susceptible to changes in the economy. So we wanna make sure that we protected ourselves in that way. So the goal should be to maintain a fund balance that assures adequate funds to prudently meet financial needs as stated above, while avoiding excessive stockpiling of the public's money. There was some discussion last week about some rogue cities that, stories that they had 50% fund balance or 100% fund balance. That's what I mean by stockpiling of the public's money. I would never support that. If we ever got up to, you know, even to a 30% level, I'd be telling you the following year, we need to spend some money because that's the taxpayers' dollars just sitting there, not benefiting them. So, the Governmental Finance Officers Association, GFOA, recommends the adequacy of unreserved fund balance in the general fund should be assessed based upon a government's own specific circumstances. So if you take that in context with who we are as the City of Lebanon with two major funding sources that are somewhat volatile, we're gonna wanna err on the prudent side or conservative side when we decide how much fund balance we wanna set aside. Nevertheless, GFOA recommends at a minimum, let general purpose governments, regardless of size, maintain unreserved fund balance in their general fund of no less than 5% to 15% of regular general fund operating revenue, or of no less than one to two months of regular general fund operating expenditures. Now, to be conservative, I've, my other cities that I've managed, I've always erred towards this two months, which is about 17%. So going forward, you may hear me talking about 17% because I would feel very comfortable if we were a little bit north of that. So, but that's, that's a policy issue that I'm sure we'll have lots of discussion about going forward. So, here we are, a look at the beginning and ending fund balances for the last few years. We started fiscal 12 with 1.1 million dollars. And remember that other chart I showed you that showed the actual dollar amount reduction? Well, I'm graphically showing that here, that by the end of fiscal 12, we were down to 974. So that became our starting balance. So that became our starting balance here. We ended that year at $701. We began this last year at $701. And this number, this 450, I'll tell you, Dean and I feel like this is very conservative. We're going to, we're actually going to end up north of this number to some extent. But because we don't want to err on the wrong side, we're being very conservative. So let's say that it's 450, that slide's over here. And if you spent every dollar that is in the proposed budget, we'd end next year at $400,000. We almost never do that. And I believe that we're going to be significantly better. In fact, I believe if we don't have another financial collapse, that we should be actually seeing this yellow bar extending up higher than the purple when we look at this time next year. So if we look at, you know, the GFOA statement dealt with percentages. So I wanted to represent that chart you just saw in percentages. So we were at 13% starting fiscal '12, and we've progressed on to the point where we're right around that 5%, which if you recall that statement from GFOA, their bottom was about 5%. So, you know, we're in an area that I'm not terribly comfortable with, but we're at the bottom of where we might want to be. But with our volatile funding sources, I'm just not comfortable being there. We need to improve on that. So I wanted to show you the actual external spend, if you will, of the budget. And to do that, if we take the current year that we're just finishing, the appropriate budget for the General Fund was $10.7 million. Take out the external transfers, just about $10 million. Compare that to what's proposed before you tonight. The actual appropriation is 9.38. Take out half a million dollars in internal transfers that showed up on that chart before about custodial stuff and all of that, you get down to 8.88 million, or about an 11% reduction, which curiously, that kind of corresponds to that 11% reduction or so in personnel, as we know, most of what the General Fund spends on is personnel. And graphically, that's what that looks like. So let's go on to the Urban Renewal Agency budget. Like the city budget, it begins on July 1 and ends the following June 30. Like the city budget, it provides the budget authority for our projects and activities for that fiscal year. It contains what we've defined as three funds with five segregated self-balancing divisions or departments, I'll call them funds. Dean and I are working on, and Sarah too, working on a plan to maybe consolidate some of these in the near future, for simplicity sake. Maybe there's some division there that doesn't need to be. So the Urban Renewal budget totals went over $6.3 million in appropriation authority and reflects a decrease of $12.58 million as compared to the current year adopted revised budget. I know that's a really big change, but it's really not as big as you think. Last year, the budget was inflated for the fact that about $12 million of the financial activity in Urban Renewal had to do with selling bonds for the LOES agreement. Well, we did that last year. We don't need to do that this year. You don't need $12 million of budget authority. So most of this 12.6 you see up here was this right here. And then the rest of that, the rest of the reduction you're seeing is because we're working on, I think it's a water reservoir this year, and some of that expense isn't needed going into the next year. So there really isn't a huge change here happening, except that we're just not selling bonds. So we look at the Urban Renewal Agency budget. We actually have three districts, the Northwest Lebanon, Cheetah Lake, and the North Gateway. And if we take out our internal transfers, we get down to an actual, and this is money that we're just moving around again between funds. Actually, our external authority is $3.9 million. Just to give you a graphic example of the size, the relative size of those districts, where most of the financial activity is, is in the Northwest District, 88%. So if we want to compare that to the prior year, this is what I was talking about earlier, the 17 million, 17.5, subtract out 12, and you get down to, you know, 5.5. And then you subtract out the activity for the reservoir that we have been working on this year. We don't need to do that next year. And although this says 77% reduction, it's not really that at all. So I just want, you know, truth in budgeting here. I want you to understand that when you see big numbers like this, it doesn't always mean there's really a big change going on. So although there's a 77% reduction, I think we understand now what that's about. So if we combine the budgets, which there is, there are some charts in the budget document you were given that combine them all together, we get to this 47.4 figure. If you combine all the internal transfers, interfund transfers, it comes to 12.2. So the actual external spending authority of the budgets you have before you is $35.2 million. And just to give you an idea of how Urban Renewal compares to the city budget, it makes up about 13%. So I just want to thank Dean and his staff, of course, all the department directors, all our support staffs. It's really a collective effort of all the city employees to put a document like this together. And in the seven weeks I've been here, I've seen just some tremendous effort out of all the staff to get this together in time. So I just wanted to express my great thanks to the staff. And that's the end. If you have questions, I'll be happy to try to address those. And if I'm a new guy and can't answer them, I'm going to punt to Dean.
So I've got two questions. If you could go back to the slide where there's a shortfall year over year, where they had the 140, 250, 220.
Sure. Where are we? Are we there yet?
I think you might have passed it, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're past it.
Yeah, I think it's there.
Right there.
Yeah. So previous years, we didn't know that we were coming this sort of shortfall in spending. Is this because by the end of the year, things have changed? Or at the beginning year, we spent too much? What causes that difference? Because I don't remember anybody saying, oh, yeah, we're going in the hole and spending up our beginning balance every year.
You know, not having been here, I'm not sure I have the answer for that. It could be a variety of issues. It could be that revenue's underperformed what we thought. I don't know. Dean, do you, can you address that?
Probably most of it is on revenue. Because last year, the secretary who was doing our recording said she couldn't understand some people because the mics weren't on. So a lot of it had to do with revenues because in most years, our expenditures, expenditures always come in under the total budget. So if we budget 10, we always come in under that number. So it's usually where revenues don't come in by year-end that we've missed some of that.
So there's the revenue forecast issue, like we talked about, forecasting 6% last year.
It only came in at 2% or something.
Okay. Second question. I'm not sure. What was the LOES agreement about, just very generally, for those of us who may not know what the $12 million went to?
Well, here again, I wasn't here, but as I understand it, in the agreement that accomplished the siting of LOES in the community, there was a commitment of, I think, was it $10 million?
It was right at 12.
12? Okay, $12 million.
It was $7 million for gravel. We owe up to $7 million for replacing gravel. And then there was some money for wetlands remediation. And then we bought some property for wetlands. And it was one other, there's one other thing, it came back to a little over $10 million, like $10,500.
Okay. I think you refreshed my memory. I remember this now, so thank you. That's all I had for general.
Gary, I had a question. Could you go back to the slide where there's the huge difference between the years?
Oh, sure.
It was the, I'm sorry, the, yeah, it was the projected income, I think it was.
Projected income?
The projected, right there, that third one down.
This one?
Yes, that one there. When we get to November and we see that there's this 21%, I may have the numbers exactly wrong, huge increase, don't we assume that that means the rest of the year, things might be down? That everybody's paid up?
I would assume that, but I still wouldn't have guidance to know what would happen in December. Would...
Well, but if you took the amount that was brought in in November, you could spread that out through the other months.
You could, you could. You're expecting to be up 6%, or at least that's what the budget forecast. You're up 21%? Well, yeah, I would figure that the delta between 6 and 21 is an early payment situation going on. But I really wouldn't know what the composition of the 21% is.
Yeah, and I wasn't really asking that. I was more of asking, as we do projections, because that was a big concern that we have as Council, is that we're making a projection out there, and that projection, there's a skewed number one that particular month, and it just seems like that as we see that, we need to be conservative. It just seems to me. Because when we see a spike like that, it's like, oh, we're going to, we're doing really good, and we're going to get a lot more money this year. And to me, I wouldn't think that at all. I would think, well, it's probably everybody paying on time, and we're probably not going to get as much during the year. I don't, that's just...
Going forward, it would be my direction that when we set up our budget year to year, that we're extremely conservative with how much we budget in an increase for the property tax, just because of the volatile nature of it, and because we don't want to repeat something like what happened this prior year. So 6% is kind of a bold number in my world, but that's what it was, and then this happened, so.
Good. What would you say is a better, yeah, appropriate number? If you guys use 2% this year...
If I was living out my conservative nature, I'd say zero. And if we get an increase, we'll spend it next year. Now, in the real world, where, you know, you want to try to keep up with your provision of city services against rising costs, you probably need to leave some kind of a margin there, 1%, 2%. But we want to be real careful about that.
Am I correct in hearing that you said this year, you're anticipating, the budget is for a 2% increase?
I think it's a little less than that, isn't it? It's a little less than 2%.
Where do we stand currently to date on revenue in collection?
I'll show you that.
Yeah, Dean's got a show for you also.
We'll talk about this more in a minute, how, what we did when this happened. I'll show you how we did, how I tracked this stuff.
Can I ask again, who's responsible for picking the number of budget increase?
Well, I suppose it's the Budget Officer. So, yeah, and Dean's going to get into how that number is derived at, yeah.
If you hold these questions for a minute, what I do, I do a look at having the property tax, and you'll see what we get, the reality of the thing.
Other questions? Okay, thanks, everyone.
So I'm going to do two parts here. I'm going to do a real quick thing here on property tax and how we estimate our property tax in the schedule there, and then we'll do a real quick overview of how the budget's laid out. So since we're on, since we're talking about property tax, we'll just start here. So this is how property tax, this is kind of our timeline. Here in January, we need to estimate the change in assessed value for the next fiscal year. So in January, we call the county. What the county will say is, well, we kind of tell our finance department they should budget around this. That's all we can get out of them. They won't say anything else. They won't commit. So we kind of get, this is that. So June, we approve the budget. Come October, the county posts some forms online. And what those forms are is this stuff down here, and I'll talk, show you a little bit more of what that is. So they post these forms online in October, and it says, it's a detail of the taxes levy. So this is the first indication of what we guessed back in January, how close we were. This is our first estimate.
In January, Dean, do they give you, how does that come to you? Is that a percentage, or is it a...
In January, all I get the assessor to say is, we've told our folks to do like around a 1% change in assessed value.
Okay.
Or up to maybe 2. And that's all they'll say. You know, they won't say, hey, the economy's good, the assessed values are going up. We've told our folks to do something like this. That's it.
So then in October...
Then in October, they actually post kind of what they, what the taxes they sent out in June. So that's when we get that in there. Then come November, December, like Gary said, we get about 80% to 90% of our taxes in November, December. And so before we've even finished collecting this year's taxes, now we're estimating for the next year.
But in October, you have a firm number?
Well, I don't have a firm number. I've got a number that they say we should get. That doesn't tell you what they're going to collect.
That's what I meant. You have a firm increase.
Yeah, I know what their, I know what their assessed number was.
What did that come back this last time, you remember?
That's down here. Let me get bigger here. This is what they, they post us online. This is the city total assessed value. I guess I can do it this way. This is the city's total assessed value, including URDs. They take out our URDs, which were about 100, oops, about $183 million is what we have in our URDs. So the general taxes are $779 million. So they say with that, we should collect about $4 million. And then they take that, they come down and they tell us, oop, this is what their compression was. That's another oddball thing with Oregon. We have Measure 5 and Measure 50. It's a difference between assessed value, real market value. The farther they are apart, the more your compression is. This is kind of a wild number. So they come in and say, here's what it is, based on what their computer model says. So then they come down to the bottom and say, with all that, this is what the city should collect. So, you know, that's what we should collect. Then you take that, and you have to figure out, okay, so what's our uncollectibles? You know, is it 90%, 95%? So we'll collect this number, but it may take you 10 years to collect it because that's what Gary was saying. You know, we collect things into the next year, and every year, I budget for previous year taxes because there's a lot of this they don't collect, and they collect it down the line.
And they go three years, and before they have to hit nail?
Yeah, before they foreclose on somebody, we find and then collect.
They'll come in with the three years ago taxes and...
Yeah, three years, or when they sell the property eventually. So they might foreclose on it now, but if they don't sell it for two more years or three more years...
So we get an assessed rate increase, and then at that point, it's up to you or the Budget Officer to predict a delinquency rate as well? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so what do we predict? And how have our delinquency rates trended?
It's usually between 93% and 95% to collect. You know, the county does really good. So it's usually somewhere between 93% and 95%.
So 5% to 7% delinquency?
Yeah.
And that's been our historical trend for...
If you go back and look, yeah, somewhere between there. So I'll jump back to this thing here. This is how I do, can I make it any bigger? This is how, no, it's too big. This is how we go through and estimate our taxes. So in October 2012, '13 here, the county gives us that form. So I fill this in. So there's the actual for this year. What we don't know is this number until the next August, what we actually collected. So then we take those numbers and we say, okay, so we're going to... So, then we take those numbers, and we say, okay, so we're gonna estimate, in this case, we estimated a 3% increase in the assessed value. So, the 804 becomes 829, that calculates out, we get our crystal ball out and say, what do we think the compression's gonna be? We estimated 100,000 this last year, so our taxes should have been about $3.9 million. That's what we should have got. Then come October, we go, oh, look, you know, this is what, it went down. And, and again, we won't know this actual percentage here until this next August. That's when we get our last tax payment for that, that year. And then I'll know what we actually brought in, and I'll adjust that number to make this the actual number. So, then we're using these numbers, and we're going over to the new year, and you can see we've put in a 2% change in the assessed value, and we're figuring compression's gonna be about the same next year. So, we should have about $3.7 million in, in taxes this next year.
If compression is 124 this year, it's going, reducing it?
Because, because as real market values go up, which they are going up...
The compression releases, okay.
So, so I'm hoping compression's gonna go down this year. You know, if you remember, remember back a couple of years, we got surprised, and compression jumped to like $400,000. It was just, you know, we budgeted like $25,000 for it, and it went to $400,000. Now, that's the year that we got messed up, Sweet Home, everybody got really messed up that year. So, we're kind of going with that this year. So, that's where we should be, around $3.7 million.
With a 7% delinquency?
I know, I've got, yeah, with 7% delinquency there, yeah. And so, hopefully that delinquency will come in smaller, you know, we'll get up to 95, so it'll be a less, and we'll collect more. So, that's what we get from the county. And then, here's what kind of answers what the mayor's question, is what I do, every month when I get taxes in, I take, when I start this spreadsheet, both sides of this are empty, and I've got like here, these are the remaining payments we got coming in this year. I'll get a couple more payments in June, and one more payment in August, that'll get put back to this, this fiscal year, when we, when we get to the end. So, as the months come in, I'll move a month up, 9/11, and payments, the payments come in pretty close to the same dates every year. They could be a few days off, and so I try to track, you know, where we are at any month with this. And here's where, in November, hold it, we're 1.6 million up. And you're right, and you know, I kind of went, what in the world is going on here? Something's not right. And, and I'm not gonna run into Dana and say, we're rich, buddy, like something's wrong. So, then we started getting into, into the December, and we actually called, I got ahold of the county and said, what in the world is going on? This is way off of last year. And at that point, they go, oh, we've changed the way we're paying taxes out. Well, thanks for telling us. So, so they rearranged how they make their payments. So, I'm assuming next year, when I do this, these things should be closer together, because I'll move these numbers over here and start comparing to the new year. And as long as I stick to the same payment schedule, I'll kind of know more where I'm at every month. This year was just crazy, because it was, it was way up, then it was way down, and until the end of December, we had no idea where we were gonna be at. And, and that's when we kind of went, uh-oh, and we started talking, and that's when we started having meetings with the directors, you know, early January, the overstaff.
So, Dean, there's another calculable number here, and that would be, and I don't know if you can get access to it, but the county would have the number accounts or percentage accounts paid, which we, looking at this would say, well, people paid more sooner. But can you get that number, so you know?
I don't know if it's people paid more sooner, it's just the county rearranges, they make their payments.
But that ratio would be fixed whether it was 10 years ago or today, if you had that number?
I'd have to find out if we can get that...
Right, the number of accounts that represent, in your district, have been paid.
If that's what they've got, that number, we'll see if they...
That'd be extremely useful, I, I mean, I recommend you get it if you can.
See if I can look at that.
Yeah.
So, if they have it available, I don't know how they, how they track that.
Thanks, as well. There we go. With compression, going back to it, is that, you said, get the crystal ball, is that based on what we think, what you think the, the housing market is going to do?
It's basically, you know, you get into Oregon tax law, you have assessed value and real market value, and then you have Measure 5 and Measure 50. I hope to get this right. One of them measures the taxes on assessed value, one of them measures taxes on the real market value, and, and then the difference between those two numbers, when the, once they calculate them out, is compression. We're only allowed, with all the taxing units around, or the county, the school, not the school district, the fire department, the pool, the college, the city, we're only authorized $10 per thousand for general government purposes. The schools in their own pot, they get $5 per thousand. So, that's where the guy was trying to explain to you...
So, his new taxes are levied, and that, it goes over what would be the $10.
Yeah.
They then compress everyone else's taxes.
Can I ask the same to that, Dean?
Okay.
Below, to keep it at the 10.
And there's another caveat to that, too, based upon the type of levy that the voters approved, depends where that hits in compression first. So, there's layer upon layer upon layer.
And that's where a few years ago, when I said, Sweet Home, and then, you know, we got hit with $400,000 compression, and you read in the paper where Sweet Home and Albany got, you know, a million dollars of compression, because what happens is, they, they both had special levies for like police and stuff, well, when you have a special levy, those go away first. So, all of a sudden, Sweet Home and Albany had special levies for police, they got an extra million dollars of expenses, and all of a sudden, their million dollars of revenue just went away, because it was under compression, because of the market. So, they got hurt bad because of that. So, so that's where the guy was saying that, yeah, you can pass all the special levies you want, but it's up to that $10. And it's spread out across, like I said, the county, the pool, the fire department, the college, and the city, all, everybody who's got, general government who's got a tax levy out there, we all get 10, a $10 between us.
So, you could pass something, but you could never get paid on it, too?
Yeah, it, it depends on what the assessed value and real market value is.
Right.
If they're equal, yeah, you'll collect it, but if they start getting apart, then you'll start losing some of your special levies. They get rid of those first, and then, like Sarah said, they've got a hierarchy of which ones go away next, or, or if it's spread out evenly across everybody, or whatever. So, so that's how we track, and we do try to track month to month, but these last couple of years have been really weird. One, because the city changed, the county changed what they did, and then if you go back to the year before this, that's when we under, underfunded Northwest URD to 60%. So, that bumped more money into the general fund, and the next year, it went back out. So, property taxes has been really weird for the last couple of years. Hopefully, we're gonna, we'll be more stable now, we can kind of track it better. So, so, so that's what, that's kind of how that went.
So, do you believe that 100,000 that you have for compression this year, you think that's a conservative number?
I, I think so. Because like I said, it, it was, I think it, it'll be less than that, is what I'm hoping. Like I said, it was 124,000 last year, and real, I mean, real market values have come up, they've been coming up quite a bit this last year. Assessed values are capped at going up 3%. So, if the real market value comes up more than 3%, then compression should go down. And if you've been out there trying to buy a house recently, houses are on the market for days, and they usually, they're usually selling, things are going pretty fast. So, the market's doing better, better out there. So, hopefully, compression will come in less than 100,000.
So, is there some kind of professional consultation, I'm assuming that you have, or research that helps show trends to pick this number?
Compression, just compared to what we had in the last few years, and the way the market is. So...
Okay.
This, this was a county-wide issue with the payout schedule, this is how the county did it this year?
Yes, they, they changed it, everybody. And when I talked to the county, she goes, I've already had phone calls from Albany, and everybody else is calling her too, because they all had the same thing of, holy smokes, what is going on? And, and they all had, they, they all called with the same question, why the county didn't call us and tell us they were gonna do this? I don't know. But by the time I called and spoke to Michelle, they, everyone else had been on the phone with her also. So, so they changed it with everybody. So, hopefully, next year, they'll stick to the same schedule, and I'll be able to do this, month-to-month comparison, to kind of see if we're tracking with what we budgeted. So...
And if Gary's suggestion holds true, then you would know, anyway, based on the percentage of people who had paid.
Who's paid at what point.
Yeah.
So...
Were we the only city that had issues like we had with this, or did...
In what? Well, see...
No? You don't know?
You mean, issues and have to lay people off in all this, or whatever?
Well, yeah, I mean, with a, what ended up being a huge shortfall.
So, they all, I don't, I don't think, based on this, no, but based on the, our budget, our budgeted amount that we budgeted was too high, we, we projected more, we've actually brought in more property taxes here than last year, but it didn't get up to our budget, our budgeted amount. So, our, our projection was too high.
I just feel kind of snake-bitten, and...
Yeah.
It's concerning, because I, if no one, if this happened to everyone, and no one else got bit...
So, it was more, our projection was too high, so, and that's what it was.
And we're taking remedies to correct that?
And we have.
Good.
So...
Do you guys get together, your, all the financial city people, do you guys have your own little conferences, and talk about issues like that? I mean, is there professional organizations of city finance people?
The finance, I meet with all the finance directors in the area once a month. We get together once a month, but Albany, Sweet Home, the county, and a couple of the school districts, we, we meet every month. So, we talk about odd things like this.
So, what was the thought behind increase, having a 6% increase versus, I don't, what was it in previous years?
It wasn't my estimate. I'll just try to say that.
No?
My, my estimate was, what I, what I put up here, the 3, it, it was raised by other parties.
What other party?
There's only one party higher than me.
Your party?
Yes.
Okay.
So, and, and what would happen is, I, we would go in with the estimate, and then we would have a discussion, and I would get the, um, I know this is coming, this is coming, this is coming, this is coming, let's raise that number so much.
Hmm.
Okay, you're the economics guy, turns out, this, this, and this were all in URDs, and didn't do us any good. But things, and, and that's what would happen, and to balance the budget, we would, there's a 6% being, and it would go up, but that, so, I have an city manager, this is not gonna happen anymore.
Good.
He guarantees it. So, so, we're trying to move forward now, because, you know, in the past, you know, and, and we think some of the issues of the past have been fixed, the directors have got together, and we've done a lot of work on this. So, this budget's best based on a lot more reality.
Can I ask again, so the, there's a, there's a, you know, the trend was going downward in the amount that we had, right?
Little bits, yeah.
And, and so this year, we're more conservative, increase of 2%, just less than 2%, right?
Yep.
Is there, since I'm not familiar with the inner workings of this, please forgive my ignorance, but is there a reason why we wouldn't do 0%? I mean, we've, you know, to kind of try to make up some of the ground we've lost?
Well, we could. Like I said, you know, you could do that. It, it would be a cut of another, probably $100,000 out of the budget. We have to find somebody to cut another $100,000 out of the budget.
As opposed to having it catch up to us later?
Because we're down at that 5% level.
So, was the driver of the 2% then, so we didn't have to cut more?
The driver, I, I'm thinking that 2% is probably conservative compared to what, what's gonna happen, but, yes.
But you're guessing.
We're, we're, we're trying to get as much out without going, being conservative, we're trying to get as much out, so, yeah, so we didn't have to cut five more positions, or something else.
So, is the thought then that, that, you know, we're sort of stabilizing, but not gaining ground on what was previously, oh, maybe a little bit, say it increases 3% from revenues, we gain that 1%, but we didn't then have to cut more positions? And then we can grow, maybe, you know, grow that fund back up to a healthier, healthier place in the next few years, is that the thought?
Yeah, you know, before Gary got here, the directors got together, and we had quite a few meetings, you know, every day on budget, talking about personnel, materials. And, and the directors really came together, and that, if you look at your budget, you'll see, here's our budget, and then there's a column called year, year-end estimates, you notice that year-end estimate column is a lot lower than their budgets. But that's where they said, they're just trying to hold, hold their line to spend a lot less, to make this year come out in the black. You know, our, our thing was, hey, let's stop that slide, get us to stable, and then we can work back the other way. So, so that was our goal with this, is basically stop what you saw up there, the, the little 100, 200, stop that slide, and then start working the other way. So, so this, this budget this year is kind of a rebuilding budget. Let's stabilize, we're not growing, we're just gonna stabilize, stop, and then move on. So, you said that's kind of, get Gary up here.
As your city manager, my central focus in this coming year is going to be looking at everything that we're spending money on all the time, make sure that there isn't, there aren't things that are, that are unnecessary to be spent on, but just looking at, at the bills as they come through, I mean, it's, it's kind of tedious work, but, you know, this is what you do in city government, and just watch the bottom line, and day-to-day, watch the revenues coming in. I think going forward, if we're confused about what we see, like we saw this last November, we're gonna be conveying that confusion to you, so that you know in real time what's going on. So, you know, all I can tell you at this point is that, from all I've crammed in here in the last seven weeks, I believe that we're presenting you a budget that stabilized the situation, and I truly believe, I could be wrong, but I truly believe we're gonna come back to you this time next year, or with reports mid-year, that are gonna show that we're doing better than what we projected here. But I'm not gonna come to you with a budget that projects that we're doing better, because that, that just wouldn't be responsible to, when I really don't know if that's gonna happen. My sense is, we're gonna do better, but that's gonna come through the day-to-day grind of looking at our expenses, and monitoring our revenues coming in, and knowing where we are at any point. And that, that'll be my job and Dean's job going forward, and that'll be my central focus.
So, either Gary or Dean can answer this question, I know this is Adam's first year, and I've been on the committee for seven or eight years. But would it be correct to say that the committee as a whole could look at the budget, we could pull 100,000 out of it, if we wanted to have that vision of having a lower revenue forecast? Is that correct?
Yeah, as a budget committee, you can make recommended changes to the city council, ultimately, it's the city council that adopts the budget.
Right.
I'll tell you, it'd be a challenge for you to do that, with 71% being personnel in the general fund. If we wanna cut much more, as thin as things are at City Hall right now, I might recommend you think about what we're not gonna do, as far as some sort of service or department, because people, people are barely keeping things together at this point.
Sure, I understand.
Pretty thin. So, I think we're to the point where we've cut everything we can from just the, all the, the way of, of services we provide. If we wanna go a lot deeper, we need to have a discussion about what we're not gonna do anymore. So, but yeah, you, you can make some recommendations that would build in some more savings than what's in the proposed budget, you can certainly do that.
Question for either of you. Based on Dean's answer to my question, I gathered that he wasn't comfortable doing what he did, and as far as wanting to put 3, told to put 6. Where's the balance for that? Should that happen again? Not to put you on the spot, but should you get a wild hair one day, and everyone has a boss, and come up and say...
My nature, Jason, is to err on the side of, if the money's not in the bank, I'm not gonna trust that it's gonna come. There's a balance there, like I said before, maybe 1% or 2%, if I can have some confidence that the economy is rising and so forth, but there, there's a risk involved. And I, I think we saw that last weekend, what the guys presented, and, and I think what we've been trying to convey to you here is that we're making projections months way out before it's really known what's gonna happen. So, my nature is to be conservative with that. So, and I'm, I'm learning here, too.
I'm sure, yeah.
As we go forward, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get a better feel for this city, and how revenues come in, and, and the local economy, and what, how that might translate to the city budget. Unfortunately, there's some things I don't completely understand at this point. Unfortunately, there's some things I don't completely understand at this point. So going forward, I'll probably become more of a resource for us in that regard. But at this point, I can tell you that my nature is to be conservative, and this is certainly not the first city that I brought back from this kind of a situation. Ketchum, my immediate past city, in 2009, we were at 3.5% fund balance. Within two years, we were at 20. And that came from just the day-to-day grind of making sure we were spending money wisely. Just because we have an appropriation doesn't mean we should spend it. And then also monitoring our revenues to make sure that they were coming in as we thought they would. And learning from that as we go forward.
If I heard you correctly, your question was about where the balance from that comes, right?
No, my question was, should something like that happen again? What's the out for the finance, or the budget? You were the budget officer, correct? It's your name on the document.
For this last good desk.
And he's told, do this. But he doesn't agree with that. Does he go to the mayor? Does he go to, obviously, it's his boss.
It comes to me.
You're the one that told him to do it, though.
Yeah, I'm responsible.
Do it.
Backstop's on my desk.
We had an odd situation last year, too, where the city manager was leaving, and he became the budget manager, the budget officer. So it wasn't the city manager who's normally our budget officer.
Thank you for Gary to be the best budget officer I can. Because in Oregon, a lot, usually the city manager. But John made me because he wanted something to continue on, really between city managers.
I know, but does anyone else follow where I'm going here? If this happens again, if it's predictable, it's preventable. If this happens again...
It's on me.
It's on you. Okay. But if you're the one that tells him to do this, does it go to one of us? Does it go up that chain? What?
If I tell him to do something crazy?
Yeah. Not that you would do that, Gary, but...
Well, I guess it would be reviewed by you, because we'd come to you with that crazy figure in the budget, and it would come to the budget committee to put the brakes on it.
And if, but if no one tells us, again, that that's a crazy number, we're kind of at the will of...
Well, if I come to you with a 5 or 6% number, I expect...
Now I know.
I expect you to ask me questions, and if I can't convince you, then you should do something to cut that.
So I can tell you that in previous years, we had that contingency fund growing. All this time, we're seeing this dropping contingency fund. We thought we were adding to the contingency fund, or I think last year is flat.
Yeah, it was flat.
But as it turns out, we're pulling that number down year over year over year, and somehow, with the forecast and the revenue and the expenditure, somehow it never actually worked out the way it looked on the budget.
Most of that had to be revenue coming in as we projected.
So your question, though, was about, how do we, how do we make...
I think I have the answer, I think I have the answer to the question, but we just maintain that Gary doesn't go insane while he's...
Well, and I think the way it works is, if I'm understanding the process correctly, is that as a council, you selected Gary. But the difficulty is that he needs to have free rein to run things. And so if the council is constantly, because the motivations are different, if the council is constantly having to, you know, dictate what he does, then he doesn't have the freedom to do things. It's really more, you know, if he does something crazy, and it turns out bad, then he gets fired. Is that kind of right?
That's right. That's how it works.
Yeah, so, but then the difficulty is, we don't necessarily know that until a year